Called the order of the pros meeting, we have a quorum. And I don't necessarily have a chair's report, but I am gonna make a comment at the closing, basically of what we're assuming is the pros committee as we know it. I just wanna take a moment to remember Connie Davidson was a grant writer at the very beginning of this process. And when we get, now that we're here, and I say, well, why am I here? Connie Davidson is the reason that I'm there. Because twenty years ago in this process, when I was a different human being, she came to me and asked me to participate in government. And I wasn't participating. I was a gadfly, like some of the other people in this town that we know. I was one of them, letting everybody know what was wrong with everything. And she came to me and said, hey, you're a parent. If you don't get involved in this thing and help fix it, it's not gonna get done. And she wasn't speaking to me, she was speaking to someone young that was gonna be able to ride this process out, which I did not understand. She understood that it was gonna be probably a twenty-year process. So as we get closer to the playing field, which was what the original goal was, was the playing field, it hearkens me back to a few things as I babble on. But the word paradise, I believe, comes from a Sumerian word that means enclosed green space. And George Woodall talks about it in his baseball book as a stadium, as the fields that we now play on. They were probably referring to the gardens of Babylon and those things of their culture. But nonetheless, a green, enclosed place has got some aspects of paradise. And as we get closer to that, and I think we are getting closer to, even though this venue and this forum is gonna change, I really think we're getting closer to that vision. And I think of Connie, and I think of these words from a Spike Lee movie that he quoted from some ancient texts from long ago. But there be hope for a tree, should it be cut down that it'll sprout again and that its tender shoots shall not cease, though its roots and stump will grow old in the ground. Yet at the scent of water, which I believe this roof is, it will bud and bring forth branches like a plant. So as we move forward, I think this thing that had been dead in the ground for a while is really gonna grow. And so I look forward to the next stages. And with that, I'll take any other community chair reports or things that they wanna say. Kermit, you got something?
Well, if nothing else, is anybody else is gonna go, I'll go. I've got two things that I have got to throw in the kitty somewhere here. My kitty walked in. I wanna, I wanna start focusing on, and I wanna, you know, I suggest we make it a major issue to focus, to on, I think it's November, they are going to open up some grants for pedestrian trails, or not pedestrian trails, but anything having to do with transportation. And they're looking to focus more outside of San Luis Obispo, where they gave all their money for bike lanes and so forth. And so we have a chance. I've got two proposals, and one of them is mixed with the county proposal. But I'd like to at least bring them up and say, can we get a look at these things so we can start paying attention? Now Shannon and I are on pros, and we, not pros, but NCAC and the Transportation Committee there, they've sort of approved these things. They haven't really focused on, as we need to, on this pedestrian trail up from Eaton, down from Eaton to Tin City area that I wanna talk about as one proposal. And then under the bridge, the Santa Rosa Creek Bridge, for the crossing under the Highway One is the other. I've got ten pieces of paper here, I wanna pass them out as far as they'll go. And the, I wanna bring them up, and I wanna say, I think we need to focus on these things because they're becoming ripe. We have some opportunities to pay attention to it. And I think they're both important, and if, so, let me pass them out. This is the first one from multi-purpose path from, now let's not do that. Let's do the multi-purpose path at under the bridge. Let's go.
So Kermit, we're not gonna talk about this, you're just passing this out.
I'll pass it out for you guys to read in your spare time, like anywhere that is. And let's, and I.
I almost died crossing the highway there yesterday, so I'm into the under the bridge thing. It's fine when there's no car on the highway, when there's a bunch of cars.
Yeah, you can't, like, five minutes away, you try to get across.
So want to, that's, that's the first one. So let's, well, we got this out. It's going, what this is a proposal. It takes the multi-purpose trail that's on the, in the Cabra Park, on Fiscalini Ranch, sort of redirects it to underneath the bridge, instead of crossing at the existing spot, just a few, a couple hundred feet up the road, under the aspect of the third span, south span on, under the highway. And this has been proposed, I pumped this up to, it was approved by the NCAC. And we've just never dealt it, because it's never been appropriate to have so many things going on. But we need to, we need to do something if we're going to get anybody paying attention to it. Now, this one is actually directed toward the highway department more than anything else. And it's, but we, we go through the county to help us push this thing through. They have replied, I've gotta reply, essentially the guy said, well, you know, it's certainly something we would look at, that we've talked about building. Way in the priorities of Caltrans, there's hundreds and thousands of them. And they've got proposals in there, that is, bridge possibly could be paid attention to for the flood hazard aspects of it, because they were, had been meaning to sort of raise it. He wasn't sure about the status of it and where it is, but it's pretty low down the priority. But there are several ways that it could be approached. One is just the existing bridge, putting a trail underneath there. And up and around, it's, it's all, frankly, it'd be quite easy to do if they wanted to do it. But it is a bridge, and it is in the creek. That's also a permit issue, several, several layers deep. But it's one of these things that could probably be done very easily. And in the future, when the other bridge would possibly be made, if ever, that would be a thing in there. So that's, that's one proposal that I'd like to put on the table as paying attention. Okay, the next one is, that's Houston, I will check. Three of that way, that way. One that way. You got next one, I'll take that, you got that. You need one, you got one?
I need that.
This is the new one.
Kermit, before I send her reading this one, have I not some surveyor on Burton recently? Are they working on something there? Has anybody seen that?
I have seen that, yeah.
Yeah, always seen it, I don't know.
Yeah, I just thought that they were working on, I don't know, I guess.
Me too. Exactly, they're gonna let us walk somewhere.
Nothing useful does. So that's, the next one is the, from the nursery on Eaton Drive, right next to them, there's, there's a historic stage trail that comes down from the hill that has an old bed on it, road bed, and goes into Tin City. And it used to cross somewhere, they tell me that the Tin City area on the creek, Santa Rosa Creek's been built up from the floods. They put high retaining walls in with rock fill and so forth, which changed in composition, and we couldn't get down that way. But the Historic Society, of which some people work on around here, have, you know, on their plan, a, a bridge that crossed from the old Vest Pocket Park to the other side. And who owns on the other side, I don't know. I don't know who, who would we even contact? At one time, they said the guy at the hardware store was willing to let people pass his land to go down there, but there is a kind of a road access, although I think it's a private road in that area. So there's lots of things that just can't be done easily that are, you know, proposed. And somebody drew a pencil on private land and never talked to anybody about it. I've talked to the homeowner, I've talked to the landowner above, on the top, near the nursery. They are very happy to see it, they might even throw some money at it, but who knows? And then that, the landowner on the, on the south side where the horse corral is, I've gave him a copy of this thing and was gonna get back to him. He never called me back, I'm fracting about if they were on vacation and I went on vacation, so forth. So these, there, it's kind of a viable project above Tin City, very, very easily done. And it would encompass the low-cost housing, which never probably be built for another hundred years, and the school up there. And so that's kind of it. And then it, it would go all the way down to Bridge Street, which would be the goal, just to get its circulation and carry people down from one neighborhood down to the other. And that's the purpose of the multi-purpose trails, just to carry, you know, larger amounts of people and various forms of contributions down there. So these two, and the other one is on this issue, on Burton Drive, the county has an eighty-page document that I didn't print out that's on, that I can send everyone electronically. But it, it has to do with their proposal on the, right beside Burton Road coming down, and like that little railing that you saw on, by the hardware store, where they went in and fixed the edge that fell off there recently. It's a four-foot trail. And I said, and that was the, they took the cheapest proponent to build it. The California CTC group, I'm not sure, is one of my pitch for building retainment walls. But because you do need equipment and so forth, and I don't think the proposal's adequate. But that's what they proposed for us. There, we took, got the cheapest of the four. We can discuss that in there and make a, you know, at least, two things ought to happen. One is, we could do both, but we have to maintain ours. But if they only maintain on their right of way, so they wouldn't want anything to do with this, they might fund it, but we'd have to maintain it, so that's an issue with us. And if we don't find people to pay for the funding and maintenance, that would always be an issue. And that would, that'd be a big deal on a, on a bridge and stuff like that. So that's kind of where it is, in discussions. But one is, we could move the county off dead center to get a trail down the edge of their road. If we, and this could stay at events, it's a simple project if we choose to back away from going across Tin City. So that's what I suggest that we move forward with, if, if the pros, whatever it is. What's our, what's our name for?
The two committee for commission, you know? The first three letters will stand.
So if that is, is, we need to do this, because we have an opportunity to get, to apply for money coming up in the future.
Okay, perfect, so my goal, those are on yours. Hey, don't really wanna talk about this too much, even though I do. The only reason I let you go on like that are these are the only two things in this town that interest me personally. I'm like, yes, these two things. I'm like, yeah, don't we think they're serving for that thing, the eighty-page document you're talking about? Yeah.
And I just, really super quick, I'd like to say that that trail from Eaton to Tin City is the trail we used my entire growing up to get down to Bottom Jams after school. And that the three most dangerous places to walk in our town are our school sites, by far.
Our children have.
So this is like, something that we. Here we go.
Definitely wanna be on our radar.
I was at the CTV meeting with Dirtskin and Blanken right now, and Bram. And he, well, we were talking about the bikes, right? He used to be a motel on the hill with an electric bike. They're no longer on the hill. They're really into doing the front in front of the lodge, which is the worst spot in town to walk, not just for kids, but everybody. I was passionate about that spot with my kid driven on his basketball to the junior high. And it's still there, that's part of the larger component. Nonetheless, there's fire behind this right now. Someone's gonna get hurt on these bikes. It's not, it is good. But I saw, I saw mom with a kid riding thirty miles an hour down Moonstone Beach with those kids. It's, it's a trip, what's going on? So it's our duty to at least drive a bike. So if the road on the side of Burton has that, has that rail on it, you're not gonna ride a bike down it, though.
Probably not, and there is showing up to ask you. We have gone out there on Gorilla, cleaned up a lot of the poison oak just to make a safe place to walk. And the lodge should be very into this, because you watch their patrons walk down Burton, and I've even seen them come down the other side and just, you gotta stop and say, you're gonna get killed.
Yeah, yeah.
It's terrifying.
Anyway, that's, that's good stuff. There's some water for the plant right there. Anybody else wanna comment on that after I'm done with Kermit? That's good work, that's good stuff right there.
Yeah, and let's just.
Adolph, you got something?
No, I just remember all this big, and somebody's agenda now for the last ten years or something. I know that much. But it's a lot, worried about liability using their path.
You mean down the mountain?
They use that path that they have the Christmas stuff on it.
Oh.
And I know that part of the kid, having used that anyway.
Well, they kinda keep it closed on, and it's not a very, it's not a very efficient way to get back and forth on the trail. You stay to the road, and the road is precarious.
Yeah, but, but Adolph brought one point, that, they maintain it. That's one thing that David may not know, but Carlos will go talk to somebody up there at the lodge, and they would finally stumble down, replace a step or two or the railing that fell. Their maintenance sucks, but, and there's people on it all the time. But it, yeah, we want a faster commuter trail, not, not a wildland trail. And, but, I, you know, and I, I traverse that trail, but it's poor maintenance. But they're obligated to do it. So even if, you know, that's the issue, is how good a maintenance are you gonna get? Because you are gonna have down that grade, no matter, any wheel vehicle on that grade is gonna be moving. It's, it's a steep grade, and that's the problem with going down it with electric bike, is you can get to whizzing.
Well, and you eat, you eat it on the corner crossing the bridge on that.
Yeah.
So I have a lot of scars from that.
So the trail that goes, one you're talking about, that kind of goes lumberyard area?
They're used, that was a historic trail, there's nothing, it's only if they allow us in there now. And where, where would you cross the creek? Crossing the creek is the issue.
Yeah, I understand that.
And it's, it's, if you're gonna pay for a bridge, which is expensive, you have to say that, well, there was a crossing here prior to it. There was a dry land crossing, I don't know if they'd let it, I thought that was the biggest issue that they had with putting the new pedestrian bridge in on, near the.
But they proved that there had been a bridge there historically, so that's why.
Well, the crossing, not a, not a bridge, but it was, it was flat on both sides of the creek. And, and it's all built up now on the lumber side, with the Chinese templary, where they own a little bit of space there that is a, it comes up gradually, you can tell, kind of tell that's where they would have crossed, you're going up. But the other side is fifteen feet of rock.
Okay, we need to move on and quit talking about wagon trails. Change that, crossing that creek. All right, it's good stuff, though, and that would be awesome. Go ahead, Shannon, say one more thing.
Okay, not about the trails, but kind of about the trails. So I did ask that the fields and the dog park, I can't remember if I asked about the dog park trails, all be listed on the agenda so that we hit them and discuss them at every meeting. Because they are not separate from the east ranch, they are the east ranch. And we don't spend any time going through each one of the things that already exist on the east ranch and discussing how we're going to handle them, maintain them, use them, all that stuff, which has kind of been one of our problems. We have to carry over from meeting to meeting. So I know that we're in a, you know, a flux, and we're gonna get to that later. But with, with the trails that Kermit just brought up, and the fields, and, and everything else that we are attempting to implement, and is literally already there, I would like to make sure that we create an agenda that addresses all the components of these things when we have our meetings.
Yeah.
So that's all.
Good, thank you. All right, let's move on. Here we go, Ex officio reports, friends of the Fiscalini Ranch, Katie.
Well, hello. Weeding in August, not surprisingly, continued. We had twenty-six volunteers put in a hundred and sixty-five hours removing thistle, mustard, and poison hemlock that also cleaned along the bluff trail where it was becoming impassable. So weeding eventually becomes trail work. So that, that, I would say the transition is effectively started. For trails, we have installed, we, we have trail counters. As you know, they're infrared counters, and the number of people who go by on the trails, I've reported that to this question before. We have them on the bluff trail, and we have them on the marine terrace trail. We also have them on Huntington. But Huntington's not, you know, it's too open-ended. So what we did, now we put trail counters at all of the west ranch entrances, except Highway One, which has to be special, because people who come off Highway One may be there for recreation, but deconstruction is also one of their major goals when they park at Highway One. They wanna take things, disassemble things. So we have to really armor the counter at Highway One. So all the rest of the counters are in, they went in at the end of August. And I collected data, which I'm doing every, basically every six months. So for the bluff and marine terrace trails, over the course of eleven months, we had two hundred and forty-eight thousand visits on those two trails.
Wow.
Yeah. So this is a very highly-used open space.
Not all deer going there.
Right. Only between like midnight and four. I don't know if the mountain liner really might be tall enough.
Yeah, they don't.
There's one that says.
Yeah, they don't go through the gate, I know, I know. So that's not a full year, and that's only two trails. So I'm putting counters at all the trails, FF RP bought these counters and installing and maintaining them. But I think the magnitude of the use of the ranch by both people who live here and visitors is tremendous. And as far as things that parks and recreation and open spaces don't really care about, the ranch is something you should really care about, because that is the primary recreational feature that we have in this town. And if you're local, go on Tuesday, that's the least visited day. But we won't broadcast this part. And Saturday is busiest day, so.
Come to us on Wednesdays.
On Wednesdays, it's probably why Wednesdays not as slow, because all the meters go in on Wednesdays. So the vast majority of the traffic for these two trails is on the bluff trail. Say seventy-five percent is the bluff trail and twenty-five percent is marine terrace. But I'll have data on all, all the trails.
That's awesome. When I've been wanting that for years, to actually be able to quantify what it is that we have. So that's just that. Now all of a sudden, I'm like worried about my personal privacy. I'm like, oh, how they're tracking me, I'm like, well, that's, so how is the, how does this system kind of, how does it work?
It's a particular infrared signature, and even then, we wouldn't be able to know. It's just infrared.
Just like when something moves through the line?
Yeah.
And then how wide is the line? Does this bother?
Ten feet.
Ten feet, and how high can I jump over the line?
You could, yeah. They're mostly, there's probably a little bit of waist height.
He's made.
Is that the limbo bar? You can go.
Yeah, you can go on your, or over.
Small dogs are never counted, very large dogs.
Well, and they're all, it's like, I haven't noticed them now, I'm like, oh, I'm gonna try see if I can see them.
We try to make them inconspicuous because of that deconstruction issue.
Yeah.
And they're not, and they're totally useless without the system. So you can't like take it home and use it.
Yeah.
They're a very old-school type of system we bought from Canada. I think we've put, I don't know, six or seven, maybe up to ten thousand dollars into this counting system so far, which hopefully.
So we could really figure out which trails are being used over another trail, and which ones are used for movement of locals from place to place? And there seems to be all kinds of stuff you could figure out.
Yes, but each counter is, is like five hundred dollars. So you have to really wanna know. And I didn't put them on the east ranch, because the entrances to the east ranch are too porous.
Yeah.
Like, you know, people, it's just too difficult to count. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be meaningful. So I just thought, we'll just encircle the west ranch with eleven counters, and at least we'll have that data.
Can it tell the difference between a person and a bike?
Bikes aren't hot, so we just measured the personal.
Oh, my God, that's a thing.
Yeah, that's a neat thing.
I'm not very smart.
But deer, I can't tell the difference between a person and a deer. So like, there is some deer traffic between one and, like midnight and four. But I'm pretty sure it's Cambrians between four and midnight. That's mostly, mostly our, our people.
That's why I come to these meetings, people, learn that kind of stuff right there.
So we were delighted to be in the Pine Dorado Parade, and once again, won a trophy, which was fantastic. We had twenty people in our entry, which was part float, part drill team, part undrilled team. Mostly undrilled team. So that was really fabulous, and it was fabulous to see all the support for the ranch along the way, people were very happy, they loved the ranch. Presumably, they're, some of them, quarter million people doing this trail. So it was really rewarding. This is the second year in a row that we've won a trophy, which is metal. Yay, Lions.
No expense bear.
No expense. And it is the second parade I personally have ever been in. So now I'm thinking, oh, yeah, parades, you go to a parade, you win a prize. Okay, so that was, that was just a lot of fun. And anyone who wants to march with us next year will have more, more fun planned.
Does the counter account for entrance and exit?
That's all of them divided by two.
Got it.
The number's all divided by two, which of course is not, because I'm only doing these two trails, people could enter one and then leave by Trenton, or enter by Trenton and then go, you know, it's difficult, I can't actually control an actual accurate number, because I'll talk to people and find out that they entered on Highway One, and now they're on the, coming in through the south bluff trail. And I'm thinking, well, that's a good walk. So, but, you know, it's very suggestive. So I think that the number of people who do that sort of thing are probably a very small number. But no, I took the total and divided by two, presumably left, yeah. It's a point.
So using the counters basically tells you what kind of traffic you have. How do you use that data to, to survey it more often to make sure that it's okay or what?
My goal in part is to go to the Tourism Bureau and ask them for support for the ranch, because clearly it has a lot of visitors. One of the things I'd like to do is spend a weekend standing there with a clipboard and say, hi, you from Cambria, you from elsewhere, you know? And just kind of get a, get a idea of how many people are from. Well, on the weekend, it's not gonna be locals unless it's really early.
Well, I know that way back when, we did have dozens, basically, who would count? We kind of, but that's.
Yeah, we've done.
Years ago. And so how about the trails themselves? The original trails are basically established by people deciding to make a trail. Have you now narrowed that down to trails that only, only people can use those trails, not others?
Oh, there are official trails, and they're all on the map. And one of the things that we've been doing over the years is trying to close the unofficial trails, in part because every trail needs to be maintained. Every trail that has trees over it, those trees, when they become weak, then become dangerous trees, and they have to be cut down. So that's more expensive, and it's more interference with the forest. So if you stay on the main, the actual trails, then you can just maintain those trails and keep those safe, rather than having to cut down everything on the ranch, because people are going off somewhere else.
Yeah, I recall, let's see, I wasn't on the board, maybe fifteen years ago, that one of the problems we had really was the unsateliness of trails that were reestablished just by roaming or whatever. And that was one of the things that there was a little bit of concentration on, to try to induce that, so that it's more of a pleasant feeling looking up rather than looking at another trail as, you know, by somebody.
And some of them will, you know, be right next to the trail that you're on. It's like, what's, what's really the point of being ten feet over there? You know, it just doesn't, it doesn't make sense. There are trails too that are, there's one trail people have established, we're, we're trying to establish from Victoria Way down to Marine Terrace. And that's very. And that's very steep and it will, it slid a little bit in the last rain, we've been trying very hard to keep that closed for that reason. But if you go out there, there'll be signs that say. Uh, closed for habitat maintenance. That means this trail is, we're trying to get you not going. And then we'll put sticks and branches and stuff to make it harder. Yeah, so it's, it's very difficult to. Patrol people. Impossible really, but you can encourage them to do the right thing. And these counters are all at the trailheads. They're all at the trailheads of the entrances, so there are none. I don't put any out in the forest or in the grassland anywhere, they're all just at the trailheads. So we count entrances and exits.
Super, thank you Kitty, all right, that takes us to Julie.
Lots, yeah. Bring it down into small bites because there's a lot going on. Um, first I wanna say thank you to the Lions Club and all that was Pine Dorado because it's what makes our town great is these type of activities. And like Kitty, we love doing the parade, we were in it again, we did not go as large as last year because. The half pike almost gave me a heart attack, so um. You did not see us on the half pike, but you saw us of course skate Cambria Strong, we came in first place in non-commercial youth. And we partnered with Cambria Grammar School. And they took first place in best theme, so super proud to be with our otters who are otterly amusing. Because we want to bring as many kids collectively, collectively together to be part of the project of course, so. Um, so you saw us skate Cambria, of course, at Pine Dorado. Next up was funding and we are currently at roughly seven hundred thousand dollars. That is a combination of private donation, I constantly say it, memorandum of understanding with the district pledges. And I'm happy to announce a forty-seven thousand five hundred dollar grant that was approved by Cambria Tourism. Took us two and a half years and three applications, but it has been approved. And the money has been allocated for assistance for the bathroom, which is being of course required by the county. So we are earmarking those funds in infrastructure specifically for the bathroom. But money's money and it's going to the bottom line and of course that helps our commitment with the district, so in addition to that. Cambria Community Council, thank you, all that the council gave us another ten thousand dollars, making it a positive fifty-seven thousand five hundred. Um, in that total number, so that is exciting as the fundraising continues. I will also say again, we've never taken our foot off the gas nor do we intend to. Uh, we've already of course started the operation and maintenance fund that was started by Lions, thank you Lions again. Uh, that was started two years ago and we have five thousand over five years, we don't know what that operation and maintenance number may be. So I like to just kind of think that that five thousand is already sitting there off to the side. Knowing that we'll backfill the cap once we know the number. We are out with the county right now, I mentioned that last time I was here, we've already passed our CEQA. Um, all we're waiting on is planning. And um, we feel very confident in that space, don't perceive any issues, we're down to kind of a setback. Um, in addition to that, I'm looking forward to working more with our facility and maintenance with David. As we get a little bit farther down the line, um, and that would include of course potentially the grants notifying us the end of this year. That Ocal grant is critical, again competitive, but we feel very good about it, um, if the grant comes in, we're in great position. And if the grant doesn't come in, we're still in great position, so I know you'll be talking to me very, very soon. Comfortable in saying that, I'd like to thank the community again for their continued support, they just show up. And um, we saw that on the parade route as well, just the enthusiasm, Shanna, of course, as part of skate Cambria, thank you for helping. And also look for us in the spring, uh, we're gonna be a little bit quiet over the fall only because of the grants and waiting. Um, but the spring will be coming out with a big fundraiser and it'll be a combination of music and food trucks. And a great opportunity for the community to get out and have a good time, so. That's updated on the state park unless there's any questions. I know, I said I brought it down at small.
There you go, that's good.
Yeah.
Anybody questions for Julie?
Nope, you're gonna make it easy on me, nothing Kermit, you got nothing?
All right, beautiful, that takes us into public comment, not on the agenda, does anybody have anything they would like to say? In the room, nobody, okay, I'm gonna read the two public comments I have that are written. Alita Francis writes regarding the community park plan one would like to make two suggestions. One, a comprehensive male survey can be included in the water bill regarding the recreational features proposed for the site. To obtain, uh, to obtain community buy-in and to prevent any disputes during the permitting process. I appreciate the grassroots efforts made and that the data has merit, but it is not representative of the hundred percent. Of the at-large community. For this project to move forward smoothly, we must have the support of the majority of community members. An at-large survey is a key tool in making this happen, I am willing to volunteer to assist with the creation of the survey. This is a more democratic process and something that community members will more likely support, even if they didn't get their way. At least they will feel heard. Number two, an updated community park plan should be created for the development. Of the overall project, including placement of the newly developed recreational features proposed. The last one I can see online was created in two thousand and nine, it's nicely done but doesn't represent the current recreational features. Being proposed, I am willing to serve as an advisor for this effort. I currently work as a plans examiner and building inspector. I have experience as the founding chair of a neighborhood council in Mission Hills in Los Angeles County in dealing with developments. In communities, it appears that this project is taking an unreasonably long time to. Expedite due to lack of global project planning and coordination. Each individual project needs to be brought together to collaborate in a global development effort, each project can be. Adversely impact another and all the considerations need to be taken into account before this project moves forward. Once we have an overall plan, each project can be constructed in phases and resources become available. We need to design and allocate a space for each project as a larger plan. I have studied the maps and don't see any reason at all why all of these wonderful features, cameras hiding the space. With some proper planning and a lot of, and a bit of negotiation of space between the project. The piecemeal approach to installing the recreational features is fodder for trouble in a myriad of ways. I would be happy to consult on this coordination of a larger plan. Thank you, all right, that's number one, number two, Linda Priensis again says hello again, I have a lot. On Norwich Avenue with water meters ninety-one for over ten years, I bought it as my retirement dream, I am now seventy-five. I did not know about the restrictions when I bought it, please could you open a hundred building permits, thank you for listening, Linda Priensis.
What, what are they after?
They want, she wants the building list open. Um, okay, any other public comment, boom, saying none.
Okay, I can comment on.
No, you cannot.
And I can.
And actually, you know, while I do say something like, you know, brief, you know, you know, brief discussion, you know, but definitely you, you don't dive in. You don't just, oh, I'm not gonna take Karen over there.
It's not say discussion, it says statement or question for clarification.
Yeah.
And I do have legal counsel's authority to say this meeting on an agenda.
So statement for clarification, what I wanted to, that's what I wanted to.
So bad you had to have a separate meeting, let's not do that again.
Can I make a statement for?
Karen.
The person making public comment is not here to answer the question or statement for clarification. Cause she doesn't.
Actually, I'll give you thirty seconds to keep going there. All right, moving on, facilities and research manager. David, mister, I should call you mister something, David, go. Yeah, something good.
Something good, I've just been working with, uh, my colleagues, we just everything that'll be coming up, uh, dog park, talk to them. Uh, I know there's plenty of kids, uh, well, since Mike said that's all, so. Look, you see, it's not gonna be, it'll be on cylinder blocks for the time being, uh, they're talking about shady structures and stuff like nature. Uh, I'm gonna have them, uh, come to your guys' meeting when there's one they're lacking. Uh, they didn't know we're all coming out and I mentioned it, so that's where we are. Um, nah, we've been trying to keep up with the weed abatement, we're gonna be doing that. Uh, most likely next week or week after, getting east ranch again, doing that, working our way back into the west ranch. Had an conversation with you, so, yeah, um, nah, we've been, uh, pulling pretty good out there doing the waters. So that nature for the dog park, um, uh, over in that right now. Still learning, taking a lot in.
So the dog park, um, they should be coming to us to ask permission for those things, right? Or do they go to the CCSD to ask permission for those things? Not, not a challenge, but.
No, no, that was, I, that's along, cause I was like, oh, you're talking to somebody, good, there's a group, there's somebody, there's a structure. Good, yeah, I mean, I.
Shelly Beckers.
Yeah, I, I told them to start coming here, um, cause I was asking about the trees that got planted by Beautify Cambria.
Uh, we planted those trees, oh, okay, they, they said they did. Beautification grant, so that may be the.
Yeah, so just things that are happening on the east ranch that aren't in front of PROs. That doesn't, that seems like a weirdness to me.
Right.
I think that actually did go to protest, it was years ago.
Yeah, were the trees, oh. Yeah, three or four, three.
Yeah.
All right, anything else, anybody? Boom, great, saying none, thank you for coming. Yeah, you need to go and even do some work, I feel like they're not doing any work down in this one. Uh, all right, regular business, here we go. Uh, discussion regarding existing PROS commissioners, uh, interested in continuing on the PROS committee. Does anybody not wanna continue?
I definitely want to.
Adolf?
Yeah, I think I, I've been on this post board, excuse me, I've been post commissioner for a while. And I've kind of reached the age of the president, so I think it's probably time for somebody.
Figure of ya.
Somebody younger than I am, I think that we really need to get some younger people in the process. I was talking to somebody a couple of days ago and they said that they were on the board somewhere in the valley. And he said that, you know, our real problem is, is we don't have enough young people on the board so that. From generation to generations, that things are, but you know, they are aware of it and they can do. What they need to do, and I think that's true of the PROs, is that you need enough people who are. Interested and willing to give their time, etc., to, to be on the board. And I think that, uh, having done that for, for a few years, it's about time we need to pass on to somebody else.
Well, Adolf, thank you for those words.
But thank you for your service, and at the end of your service, you get a. An engraved pen or something?
All right, I'm gonna tell you an Adolf story, when we, when we, um. Did the ranch in the beginning, in the very beginning, when it was going down, I didn't know Adolf. But when we would go to meetings, he was the one guy that struck me that read all the paper. He had read the stuff and he understood it and he was conceptualizing it and you could tell that he wanted this thing. To move forward correctly, but he wanted it to move forward and be what it's become, so Adolf, your work has been, even though maybe not. Given the accolades that it deserved, it has definitely been, uh, benefited to the community, so thank you. Anybody else?
So does that question mean that we get to continue on PROs? Or is the board, um, entertaining the idea of expanding us and re?
We had a discussion on July twentieth about what the changes would be and it was assumed at that time. And anyone who wanted to remain among the PROs would be part of the PROS committee. But we do need to know if there are going to be any vacancies, so we can make sure it's on the agenda to advertise for, um, an open position.
Well, would there be an open position if John was the alternate, does that make him on the board then?
He would need to apply.
Oh, but the rest of us don't, we're just gonna be on?
The existing commissioners should not need to reapply.
Gotcha.
But the, the discussion on whether to reapply or not has not been a board discussion.
I'm an alternate, I can repeat it all.
So, once this is done, there will no longer be alternates or ex officios, it will be a standing committee. With five committee members and a director and a chairman.
And Jim has acknowledged that he wants to remain too? Yeah.
Okay, so, but you can put on the agenda, and it'll be up to the director who's going to be chair. To have a report from FF RP. And state park, you can still agendize those kinds of things. But they will not be. Committee members as part of that board discussion.
Okay, all right, that'll conclude that particular item, there you go, I guess. It's been reported, Michael, you'll take it back to the board?
I'm listening.
Yeah. Uh, and now we are on to discussion regarding signage, survey and maintenance plan for the east ranch field.
So I have, of, you know, a lot to unpack there and obviously involves David. Um, the master plan calls for, just I'll start with an easy one, the signage, master plan calls for unified signage on the east ranch. Which we haven't ever tackled, um, dog park, they even have, I don't think I've even really seen some signage, a number of some. Such funky things.
Like half a dozen signs.
Yeah, um, so as we go forward with the east ranch, I want to agendize and make sure that we tackle the issue of signage. On it as a regular, um, uh, meeting agenda item. So that we are creating unified signage and that we are addressing issues, you know, needs for signage. And, um, looking at how the signage fits in with the whole plan, so that's, that's one of the things I really wanted to make sure that we. Did not lose in this transition was that. Um, the survey, uh, it's been decided that PROs will, um, be responsible for. Presenting another survey to the community, um.
It's on our agenda for next Thursday.
Okay, so what does that mean?
We're going to be discussing. Pro doing the survey, yeah, I pointed you, yes.
Okay, all right, so the possibility that we might be, um, I am begging. CCSD to let us because A, it is wildly appropriate. Um, and B, I have a, a real concern about only. About the survey can be problematic, obviously, because it can be designed to skew results. Um, and if it's sent in just the water bill and you only have the people who. Own property in Cambria responding to the survey, potentially responding to the survey. Um, you're, it's not a democratic process, when you do a survey, you're looking for, um, a representation, representational. Um, um, uh. Feedback from the community, not feedback from the entire community, you're never gonna get it. The last survey that we sent out and the bills got, what, two percent of our population responded. Um, the idea behind going to farmer's market and out to the Hispanic community was to broaden the scope of the survey, not narrow the scope. It was to get people who use the trail system or use the facilities. And people who are also in the household, but not necessarily the person who undoes the water bill. Um, to respond and give us their input. Um, so I am passionate about making sure that we get more than just the person who opens the water bill. In response to the survey and then how the survey is framed. Um, you know, I did some, some real deep dive research into how many people even. Own property or how many people in Cambria receive their water bill outside of Cambria. Um, and it, it is considerable, so it wouldn't even be people necessarily using our, our east ranch or other public spaces. Yeah.
Well, since most of this Gulf people are a certain age bracket. And the people who pay their water bills are a different age bracket. You theoretically will only be doing long bowling east ranch for the rest of its life.
Yeah, when that's one of the problems that we have, of course, we are not. Um, the majority of Cambrians are not retirement age. I mean, we like to think that, we used to be an artist community, I don't know where this idea that came from that we are a geriatric community, but. I mean, we like to think that, we used to be an artist community, I don't know where this idea that came from, that we are a geriatric community, but we're not. We're not. It's forty-eight percent, not, that's a lot. It's a lot, but it's not the majority. So we're talking about a democratic thing, it's not the majority.
Oh, no, so, yeah, sorry, to be clear, you're, you're talking about not doing it in the water bill, but doing it some other way?
We need to have a big conversation about that.
Okay.
So of course, I'm sure one way to get the survey out would be the water bill. Another way would be a QR code that you scan. But the only way to make sure that we get it into a broad, uh, scope of people is to go out in the community. We're not gonna get responses from younger people. We're not gonna get responses from the Hispanic community. As a matter of fact, even the way we, um, phrase this survey is gonna be critical because like Steve said, we raised the money for that property for fields. And if we ask the community if they want fields again, they might explode. Um, so there's, um, there's a lot to consider in that. So I just want to, to like, you know, reiterate my concerns about how we do this, how we phrase it, um, how we get it out there. Um, and make sure that pros beg, that pros is responsible for this particular survey. So that was my survey discussion.
May I add one thing?
Go ahead.
Thank you for your comments. Um, the survey concerns me greatly, um, primarily because it doesn't even tackle renters.
No.
Right? And so what your stakeholders become are your homeowners.
Right.
And, um, that is troublesome to me, very troublesome.
So you're saying do a homeowner survey more so than a water bill survey?
Well, I'm saying the water bills, Kermit, are only going to homeowners and most, you know, some of them, I, I don't have stats in front of me. Uh, our second, uh, to Shannon's point, they're not even living in these homes.
Yeah.
They're not part of the fabric of our community on a daily basis. But we're giving them, I mean, a voice of, yeah, the voice of having this.
And excluding the voice of younger people and other people in the house and people who are renting and people who are coming here and frequently using our.
Correct.
Places, so, yeah.
Yeah, so like a low cost housing won't.
That doesn't, I mean.
Water bill.
Right. So if you do it in the water bill, you're excluding a lot of people.
Yeah.
Shannon's suggesting something in addition or other than that. But we're gonna have to be very creative and we're gonna have to work really hard to make sure that we get a survey response that's, um, has a margin of error of more or less than five percent because what we've already presented has a margin of error of five percent, which is a pretty dang good survey.
So part of my background was visitor evaluation and surveying people, so if you need some help, I'm volunteering.
That would be great. And I would, not that I'm commenting on the public comment section, not at all. But just be cautious because there are people who are trying to get jobs doing that. Um, and program management, um, and some of those people don't even live here and don't know what's happening with all of this. And so when they are offering their help, they're not offering their help free. So.
That's the Cambrian way.
Gotta be a free.
So you're, are gonna continue with the, uh, CCSD letter that people are the, people who pay for the waters?
Well, CCSD is gonna be discussing that and deciding.
So wouldn't you do that in addition?
Uh, we could do that in addition.
And one of the problems, of course, we have in Cambria is that our, our communication with the community has kind of begun up and down because of the, you know, uh, the local newspapers, it really strongs it used to be. And, uh, I don't get very many, but I do get, every now and then I'll get a letter from somebody in the community who is involved in something. And of course, basically send it to all the addresses, so to speak. And maybe, uh, it would be a note like that where you simply, every address in Cambria gets something.
And that's one way to help with the, with the survey, for sure.
And they can go to the web, then I suppose and do their process.
Exactly. Which, yeah, some sort of QR code or some sort of electronic version of it will get a little bit more of the younger people.
I just bought that list for other reasons and it was like two hundred and fifty dollars for every address in Cambria.
But the survey also costs money too, which, you know, we keep claiming we don't have. It, but it does, it does cost money. And I mean, I mean, I hope CCSD knows this, but there's a trust issue with CCSD and community too, so.
Well, they've never.
Yeah. Okay, so then on to the, um, uh, the maintenance plan. So my idea.
Hold on, sir. Mr. Michael, he has his hand up. Oh, right, oh, let's add that little component to our meeting. How do I do that? Lily, can you do that or how do I?
But you just.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Welcome to our bad news.
Okay. Sorry, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you so much. Uh, sorry, my connection's a little weak. I, I just wanted to let you know that the CCSD is working, um, on contracting with someone to create a professional survey that will reach out to all the demographics, uh, of concern and try to work through the different loopholes and, and different biases and the things that may not capture, um, some of the, uh, the audience that I know that, that Shannon's worried about. So, um, I know there's still gonna be concerns about the survey, but, uh, we are gonna work on our end to, um, take some of your requests and some of what you would like to see in the survey. And then we're gonna turn some of that information over to a professional that can design the survey that will capture a broader audience, if that, if that helps at all.
Hey, thank you. Okay, well, I'm gonna belabor this point then for a moment, since we're all here and the board members are here. Me, as an individual, am highly against any survey. I believe in democracy, representative democracy, the survey is my vote. And I vote for board members to make those decisions, don't really care what everybody's opinion is. Marcus Aurelius said, "The opinion of ten thousand men is of no value when they know nothing of the subject." So I'm gonna leave it at that. All right, let's go into the maintenance report.
Uh, well said, sir.
Just call him Marcus.
I know, cause we don't get surveyed on everything. There's tons of things that happen at CCSD. I would like to have a survey on.
That's the most democratic thing that we have here. To say we're all gonna drop the black or white rock into the basket like the Athenians is silly. Come on, we all wear many, right? Uh-oh, that's what happens when I'm not the leader anymore. All right, go into the maintenance thing.
Okay, so maintenance, so reading the master plan. Maintenance, um, and funding are two things that we have to design, implement and, you know, fund. Funding, fund the funding. Um, and we, I don't, you know, we've tackled that over the years and then it's dropped, tackled and dropped. Um, and David, I am hoping that we can create a unified maintenance plan for our open space. And I say that because we are not just the East Ranch, we are open space in Cambria. And there's a lot more to think about when we just come up with our maintenance plan. I know that's like your, your job, your professionally, I know you can handle it. And I'm not saying that we as a, as a committee would be, um, uh, just maybe providing input or at least having visibility into so that we can go after funding sources to help you. Um, if we both work together to understand the maintenance plan, for example, you know, the fields on the East Ranch exist. You know, we keep talking about creating fields, they're there. They're kind of crappy fields, you're gonna break your ankle running around on them, but it is a field. Um, we could do something about that by doing some grading and some better shorter mowing. No, we don't have the, the, um, resources, the, the people power or the equipment to do that. But if we start looking at each one of the components of the East Ranch and the open space that we are responsible for in Cambria, then we can decide what type of maintenance needs to happen on each one of those places and those spaces and work with you to design a maintenance plan. And then we can help you by going after grants, the county, you know, the people with money, the five oh one C threes and get the money together so that we can tackle each one of these things. And so that's one of the reasons that I have been so vocal and adamant that we bring all these five oh one C threes that are handling any open spaces for our town into the fold of pros. Because we can't keep piecemealing this maintenance plan out. We can't keep tackling fire suppression on just the, oh my gosh, that slot is overgrown thing. Um, and we can't, we can't keep operating like this, obviously. I mean, I think that's one of the reasons you're here. Um, so that is why I will, even if, even if I didn't continue on the board, I'm not gonna let this drop. All the, all the five oh one C threes that have been created to circumvent the CCSD need to be brought into the fold for community visibility and so that we can design a maintenance plan that works for our whole community. Um, and that we can come up with funding sources. And, um, so that is something, again, that probably needs to be agendized so that we don't pick something up, run with it and drop it. It's something that we talk about at every single meeting, more than just your report. Um, so that's my thought on maintenance.
Just one question. The FFRP basically does that, right? Basically you have volunteers, you have.
But that would be part of the maintenance plan, but yeah.
Doesn't require a budget as well, it's contributing.
Yeah, and that's fine. And I'm just only saying, you know, on the master plan, it, we are supposed to identify a budget to help. Or we're funding sources for the East Ranch and open spaces. Um, and so of course, that's the money we would need for maintenance. So the East Ranch, we're gonna need some sort of plan to provide maintenance for those fields or anything else we do. The dog park, everything we, we farmed out responsibility to five oh one C threes and groups. And, and that's fine, but again, we have no visibility. We're, like, the dog park's not here, but they are part of the East Ranch.
It seems, it seems to me that having formed the committee as the next go around for pros, that probably because, uh, I guess one of the board members is going to be chairman of, is that correct? That being the case, that means you have a direct conduit then to the board of directors. So that basically says that that person can advocate for a larger budget for you in order to do that kind of stuff. And I don't see where it's different than what FFRP does because they raise money, they have funds, they had a.
Yeah, but we can't, we're not getting FFRP.
And I'm just saying that their process seems to be working to a certain extent. Maybe not.
But we don't, so FFRP.
All I'm saying is, is that what you're really lacking is that funding in order to have what you want to get.
And a plan.
Well, I understand that part.
They have done a good job because they have good leadership and a good solid plan and a good group of volunteers. We have many examples around town of five oh one C threes or groups that have started to handle open space and have failed because someone dies, someone moves away, they lose interest, it just goes away. But your, this organization has done a great job.
Well, one of the things that guides FFRP is the, the management plan, the ranch management plan. And in the ranch management plan, it says there needs to be a separate management plan for the community park. And I think that's a very important thing, otherwise you're, again, it's like, I don't know, now this is happening. And there's no, there's no overall goals, there's no signage. I mean, in the management plan, we know what the signs are gonna look like, what the restrictions are, how big they'll be, all of that is.
We have no plan.
Yeah, nothing, yeah. So you need an East Ranch management plan.
But more than that, because we're not, pros is not just the East Ranch, it is open space. So it's a broader discussion. That's my only point. And my really, uh, my point in bringing it up is that to agendize it, to make sure that we're not letting these things drop, to help David. Like, i- is that problematic?
Oh, no, I was just thinking of something that has, I haven't heard of in a long time, speaking of letting things drop. And now that Ray Dian's was gone, I'm wondering what's happening with the restrooms on the East Ranch. If there's any, I haven't heard an update in almost a year, or it feels like a year. Anybody know?
Well, I.
Jim's on the, on the Zoom.
Jim is?
The GM, the general manager.
Yeah, there we go. Matt, could you tell us about the bathrooms on the East Ranch?
Apparently not.
Has to be unmuted.
I don't think so. They did it last time without me touching it. I don't, I don't, I'm not showing him here right now, so he may not still be on the call. He comes back, we'll ask him that. Karen, do you know? Um, do you know any, a question on the East Ranch bathrooms?
Ray's not gone yet.
We still haven't had an update in a long time. I was just wondering if anyone knew anything about the restaurants on the East Ranch.
Well, it looks like our next meet is gonna be a long one, cause we got a lot to talk.
Yeah, well, and not to paraphrase what it is that you're saying, but we don't have a parks department. And what we've talked about it for years is when we get a field, we're gonna need a parks department. There's somebody gonna have to schedule little soccer kids or whatever, but that's what you're getting at, which becomes a larger component to the whole thing. And, and we are getting close to that and maybe the switch to the commission or to the committee is better than the commission. Cause, you know, quite frankly, we haven't accomplished a lot in twenty years. And so hopefully this is the, the new way. So just thank you, Shannon.
I think you said this, but it's, well, the ranch management plan has a section that says community park, not here. So there's a separate, it, so I, I'm reinforcing what you're saying, there is no plan.
There is no plan.
For the community park inside the ranch management plan or inside the East Ranch, nothing, it just refers to, one will be developed.
Well, the ranch management plan has maintenance requirements for the wild parts, the rest of the ranch.
Yeah, but the maintenance requirements then are met by volunteers, correct?
No, CCSD does most of the maintenance. They do all the annual mowing, they do the fire abatement, it has to be done every year or they're in violation of these numbers. They remove the homeless, cause it's, it's a violation to have people living on the ranch.
And I definitely, I mean, this is maybe just a little bit off topic, but I am really curious about like why the county doesn't step in and help us a lot with some of those issues too.
They've never been asked.
I know, exactly. And so that is as a group, as pros, as what we are really like tasked with doing. Um, we could be a little bit more of a force with the county or against the county or begging the county or whatever it is supposed to do with the county. To get them to do what they need to be doing, because we are not getting the services that we should be getting from the county.
But not even Greenpeace, all those other landownerships for recreation inside the county or inside the town, we don't contact either.
Well, and I have reached out to every one of those, um, five oh one C threes that is controlling and managing open space in our community and asked them to do what Skate Park and Fiskelini Ranch is doing to provide a report to pros. Because right now they are managing open space for the community without community input or any sort of visibility into what they're doing.
Why aren't they on this board?
I, they should be, Greenspace's land is public, is private land, so I'm not sure. Greenspace probably won't participate, but there are other ones, there are.
But so does open space, open space is all on public land.
No, it's private land.
Yes, that's what I mean, private land. And we run, we wanna run trails on private land as well.
Right.
Can't get anywhere.
Well, I'm not sure what their obligation would be to.
Greenspace has made private lands open to the public, right? But that's, and they have no obligation to show up here and report to pros, they don't.
They don't have any.
But it would be like really great if they did, because it makes so much sense to have that sort of transparency and visibility into the projects they're working on and how they're providing open space for. Cause that's what we're supposed to do. So we should be begging all those five oh one C threes, all of which were designed to circumvent the CCSD and get stuff done, because we don't get stuff done.
Isn't, uh, NCAC supposedly is the conduit to the local supervisor?
Right, and we're working that angle right now.
Okay, so that, that, they need to be involved more.
Absolutely, one hundred percent. Okay.
They should have a representative, if we're, if we're a little serious.
Cause that's where we put the pressure on the county.
We, we should have, right, you know, even if they only show up on a computer, it would be nice to be able to discuss within fifteen minutes of our meetings what we're doing here and what, how they could help us. We don't include the county. We touched the county for the first time.
Yeah.
She did and she did, and for the, in years, or like, otherwise it was always Carlos, uh, uh, you know, and Kitty. Uh, uh, you know, and Kitty is about the only ones who went to the county once in a while.
So when you say go to the county, who did you go to?
We would ask them who they're represented to us.
We don't go to county parks.
We would go probably.
How come we, so we should go to the board, right?
We would, no, we, we would go to probably to the planning commission, uh, like whoever. We asked the questions of what is the county going to do on this particular issue like we did, like Julie went and. Shannon went and asked that question.
Well, you're right. So that's one of the.
Well, I gone to the county, the county board and they'll hear us, they wanna hear us, but I didn't feel like that. They are kind of like us, right? They're, they're like, oh, go talk to staff, which I'm assuming you're doing. Which seems to be a more efficient way to get stuff done.
Well, maybe, or would we talk money or can you help us on this or, or maintenance on issues? In the, like the pool over there, whatever, if the pool becomes a game plan. It does not hurt us to have, have a strong tie to the county. That's who owns, is a secondary deed on this property. We are not incorporated now. So there's, most of them throw some money at us once in a while.
And that would be their board, right? The county Pandora, Nash, Connors on that board at a moral day, right? Is that the group that's gonna give us the money?
No.
Or are you saying it comes from the planners?
Uh, it comes from the uh, county on a regular budget, but their planners feed the requests into that budget.
Well, so should, I'm just saying this, we're saying, hey, you should come here. That's a bad look, right? We should go there. That's what they're gonna tell us. You want something, you come here. I'm just trying to figure out where we're gonna go.
Can I lean on?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I think it's been very convenient for the county to ignore this unincorporated area. And we have not done a good job at all in making our voice loud enough to where they go, wow. We need to do something in Cambria. They don't even, honestly, Steve, they don't even know Cambria exists. And that is our fault and our responsibility.
That's what I'm telling you. When I went to that board meeting, I went to two of them, they're super stoked to see us. And they, I almost feel like those people.
And wondering why we're not applying for grants.
Yeah.
Have you been going regularly or did you just go?
It was tough because then they cancel a meeting and it's in San Luis, it's not an easy thing to do. You create that monthly presence like you have to.
But I wanna lean in on also the grant. Grants are time consuming, we know this. And this is gonna go back to just, I'm gonna put it on the table and pegging the district. To hire a grant generator part-time or somebody to do grants part-time. To expect staff to be the only one doing grants is, is not gonna get us the traction we need to be looking for the grants. And to expect the public to be bringing you the grants is completely unrealistic. We are missing out on not double digits, triple digit grants. And then when they finally get presented, we have two weeks or a month to put them together. And then we don't become competitive to understanding the grant process. And then you just get frustrated because the grant flows out and, you know, nothing happens. So.
I have volunteered to write grants and I will write grants, so.
But you shouldn't have to, Shannon.
Yeah, she should. I will absolutely.
I hear you, but I, there should be. The district, in my opinion, needs to get far more aggressive in regards to reaching for grant money. Or county engagement on grants. Um, the money is out there. We're not seeing Cambria. And so what has been a very convenient conversation, we can't do things because we don't have the money.
Absolutely.
And that drives me crazy, Steve, because you know how I approach things. The money is never the problem. You, you can find the money. Part of the problems are the enthusiasm and momentum to be able to get it to facilitate, right? There's plenty of money out there. We need to go get it.
Well, and the creativity. Of course, we, we really seem to lack a little bit of creativity in how we approach problem solving.
I, I just can't, I cannot in good conscience sit here for another five years and not at least see a community playing, a playing field. Or something in the space to respect what you, something in this recreational community space. So, I mean, I'm already feeling right now anxiety over the next six to nine months that we're just gonna be talking about surveys.
Yeah, now, let, let me add one more. Uh, when I asked a simple question to the county rep at the uh, NCAC. Who they do have a county person sit in on their meetings, uh, and, and the board of supervisor. But I don't, but when I asked the, the public works, what's the policy on sidewalks in Cambria? Because one of the things we have, we have a frontier community here. And we've pretty much stayed in the frontier community and never want to change. There's some areas where you do want sidewalks and they said, yeah, it's downtown. No, it's not downtown, it's like where you cross Burton Drive at highway one, there's a little mud path that you run across if you can get through the poison oak. That somebody needs to put in a hardened surface to at least get you up to that upper places. A couple of key areas where we talked about the. Uh, where was it at? Uh, uh, the lodge up there where people hit that rough area. The highly used areas are the places you, you have a sidewalk. We don't have a plan. We've never even addressed it. So if we're addressing open space, that's where I would see is public surface walkways. And transportation and it goes back to the trails again. That's essentially a sidewalk, but a trail that's been hardened and put in place. And they, they go in various degrees out. So when we look at this thing, we ought to be having a major community. Walkspace plan and handed to the county public works and say, yeah, we normally not budgeted, but here is what we expect out of a. Uh, for a transportation system because sidewalks are people transportation, they don't all do cars.
Well, and to Kermit's point, that is a far better survey to present to our community. Not just what are we doing on the East Ranch, because our mandate on the East Ranch is to provide recreation and we have done a terrible job at that. Where's no recreation out there. As the survey is in more, well, there, it is for the dogs.
Yes.
And I love the dogs.
I'm just being fair. The dog park is, there is a dog park.
But it would be um, a better survey to find out what the community. Um, would love to see pros do for our, our trail system, our open space, all of it. Not just, I know, the disc golf on the east, on the East Ranch. So. That would be a, a, a far better survey.
So I just wanna remind everybody in this room as part of the conversation. That these attempts have been done before and they are the results of maps that we've seen that are not even recorded with the county.
Right.
So there have been multiple discussions over the last fifteen years of go back and build a plan. And the plan looks like a map. And now we have a map and the map is not recorded with the county. And. I'm begging, I'm begging this group to please not design another map to nowhere.
I one hundred percent totally agree.
Otherwise, they're worth the, the paper it takes to, as soon as they go in the drawer, they're gone.
Yeah.
So, and basically this entire meeting is, you know, is our plea with what's happening in the transition to committee. That we take these things and actually instead of. CCSD creating a wall, an impenetrable wall that we can't get around and forcing us to create a five oh one C three to navigate around it. That we like identify these things and start putting together the um, more than the plan, the people. In the room to design these systems so that we all are working towards creating something, even defining some goals. And timelines for those goals so that we have some, some accountability for our plans. So that is my plea.
Yeah, well, there's been plenty of strategic goals established. I just haven't seen them accomplished.
I haven't seen them established. I don't see them. I'm a community member, I just don't see them.
They're all part of the annual strategic planner board. And then what happens is there's columns and checkmarks. And they just get moved to another month.
Just like, you know, KPRs with our company, no one reads that stuff, no one puts that in. Doesn't, doesn't move anything forward, it's talking points.
Okay, here we are, eleven twenty, we've got a little long. Anybody else have anything to add to this conversation? Mr. Thompson, it seems like you have your agenda full.
Didn't think it did.
Exciting conversation. Yeah.
Yeah, mine, yours, yours wide open.
All right, I guess with that, I will adjourn uh, what seems to be the final meeting of the pros commission.
Well, did we, did we want comments from the public?
Oh, not really. Go ahead, Karen.
Thank you on the rest of it then, huh?
Oh.
Oh, it's on its way to the county planning department.
Yay, thank you. It didn't just disappear.
No, no, don't use that stuff. Just can't believe it takes so long.
Oh, yeah.
Soil survey or something, is that what it was? Yeah.
All right, it's been a pleasure of my life.
It has been, we'll see you. Adios, chief.